You've got to be over sixty to have a.
Good morning. We are here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, September twenty first, two thousand and sixteen. We are here at Courthouse Square in the Senator Hearing Room, and we are going to start off our session today as usual with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I get that right? Was it the Senator Hearing Room?
Not quite.
Senator, right.
Senator Hearing Room.
You've still got a couple of months left.
Okay, so we have, nobody signed up for public comment this morning. We'll go right into our consent calendar. No? What? Oh.
I will.
I guess we, oh yeah.
Chair Cameron, if I could, I do have an item I'd like to add to the consent calendar. It's, has to do with delegating authority to sign contract documents and notices for the ballot envelopes order that a contract between Marion County and Bell and Howell, in this order would point the chief administrative officer of authority to sign that.
Second the motion.
So the motion is to add it to our consent calendar.
Yep.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? John, you want to make any comments? No? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
And then Chair Cameron, I'd make a motion to approve the entire consent calendar, including that item, but also on the calendar under Board of Commissioners, an OLC application with a recommended approval for Jade Garden, Jade Peace Incorporated, six twenty-five Lancaster Drive, northeast in Salem. Health, approve an order appointing Rodrick Cockens as the Health Department Compliance Officer for Marion County Public Works. Schedule a public hearing at the Salem Senior Center, twenty-six fifteen Portland Road Northeast Salem for October twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, at six o'clock for consideration of concurring in an amendment to the Salem Kaiser Urban Growth Boundary. And the last, in the Sheriff's Office, approve Amendment Number Three to the Contract for Services with Keefe Commissary Network to reinstate the contract and extend through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and making sure that we also have this document in there on the consent calendar. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. So we are on to our first action item. Business Services is here with us today. Colleen and Stacy, consider approval of a contract for services with E-Logic Learning LLC in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars to provide a learning management system for tracking and reporting on employee training. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Colleen Coon-Shafins, Business Services Director, and Stacy Vrooman. I'll let her introduce herself, sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am Stacy Vrooman with Marion County Human Resources, and I am here today to recommend you consider approval of the contract for services with E-Logic Learning LLC in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars for a learning management system. This learning management system will allow us to effectively track, provide, and issue employee training. Over the last couple of years, we have identified a need to eliminate manual processes, dual entry, effectively track compliance and safety training, and more efficiently report on training for all employees countywide. Our purpose in seeking our services for a learning management system was to help update our current capabilities to a more technologically advanced system, to help mitigate risk by ensuring accurate reporting and tracking for compliance and safety training, and to streamline our training management system for all county employees. We issued an RFP for several key components as part of the process. Cost, ability to migrate existing data from disparate county training tracking systems. We wanted a user-friendly interface and extensive capabilities to automate reporting, notifications, and tracking of compliance training. The RFP committee comprised of employees from Health, Public Works, the Sheriff's Office, IT, and Business Services, based on a set of specific system requirements in addition to the previously mentioned items, selected E-Logic Learning. The contract includes implementation, migration of existing data to the new cloud-based system, training for super-users and staff, and annual fees for fifteen hundred users. It is a three-year contract with options to renew in year four and five. A learning management system will provide significant value to the county. Some of the more significant additions will be employees and their supervisors will be able to see their entire training record, including expirations of compliance and certification training. In our current environment, this is not possible. It will help us to mitigate risk because it will allow for the automatic tracking of compliance and certification courses with escalating notifications as appropriate to ensure compliance. For example, in our current environment, if an employee misses a scheduled safety class due to illness or vacation, there is not a great way to catch that, and an automated tracking and notification system could prevent this employee from being unintentionally missed. It will also allow for real-time updates if someone has completed or partially completed a training. The issues respect report, which many of us get once a month, will no longer be necessary. All employees will have live updates to their training completed. It will automate several other processes, including reporting, data entry for many departments in the county, and it will allow us to better procure additional resources for training, especially in relationship to our departments that are twenty-four-seven operations. Where offering live training is expensive and more difficult. We will be able to provide accurate training records for all staff and good data on the number of people attending trainings, the hours that we're offering trainings. And it will also give us additional capabilities to, say for example, send out policies if we wanted to. So if the county decided they wanted all county employees to annually read the inclement weather policy, we would be able to automatically set that up on an annual basis to expire and ask them to electronically sign it. These are just some of the highlights of the new learning management system that the county, that we could provide the county an opportunity to more effectively train our employees, streamline many of our processes, so that our employees can better serve our community. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions?
Well, I just have one as you're talking. I hadn't really thought of it, but the massive certifications that different from engineering to health, police, certainly sheriff. But one, how does the system know the certifications necessary? Is there, does someone manually put that in that they're supposed to have, or they're working on, or how does that even show up that this is something they need?
That's correct. So what we can do is, in the system, will allow us, for example, a deputy. Well, we can tell the system that anyone with a classification of a deputy is required to have these certifications.
Okay.
So in the setup of the system, as we implement, we'll tell the system that deputies have to have this, and that it expires in this timeframe.
But say someone has a special, or even in the Sheriff's Department, unique certification. I don't know what it could be. There'd be a way to say this is something this person needs.
Yes. It will allow us to do that. So the Health Department with nurses, those types of things, the Sheriff's Office with their deputies, the engineers. And we can set expirations on all of it, which is really nice. Or you have so long to get this set of classes. I know that the Sheriff's Office does quite a bit of that. Or, you know, you have two years to meet this training requirement to then move on to the next certification.
All right. Sounds good.
So my question is about, does this actually connect in the e-modules that you've already created? I mean, is it actually around curriculum, or is it just simply around tracking?
Yes, it will connect in all of those modules. So now we would be able to put those in to the system, and even the system has some capabilities on its own to create some within it.
Okay.
So it will do both.
All right. So does it give us more opportunity to have more e-learning, I guess is the question?
Yes, significant more opportunity.
Okay, that's great. That's the wave of the future.
All right, I only have one question. What requirements will be in there for Commissioners?
You're gonna have a lot of them.
Yeah.
Nothing you don't want.
There's a special class, Kevin.
They're gonna, they're gonna teach you how to introduce board meetings.
There you go.
Nothing you don't want, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
I'm not sure I want you to have me say anything. Yes, John.
When, when I first got here, you know, Rod and I came, he came a little before I did, but at the Health Department, one of the things that Rod found was that they were not keeping track of their clinical certifications, and this will, this system will very clearly keep track of those certifications, and if you don't, you run the risk of creating problems for your grants and with, yeah, liabilities, and the federal government doesn't like you not to do that.
One other question that I just thought of. So you did this during our RFP process, obviously, went out to, so were, are there a lot of companies that do this? I mean, kind of tell us a bit about why this company, what their.
I was actually amazed at how many companies did it. Before I went out to RFP, I just kind of went out and looked, and there's probably sixty just from a simple Google search almost. And I looked at ones that like the state had or other local agencies. And they, we had four submit as part of the RFP, and so this was the one that had, you know, that met all of the requirements around cost, because obviously, cost is a huge factor, and then could do everything that we wanted the system to do. So.
And just to clarify, the one hundred and sixty thousand is not to exceed, and that's for over the first three years of the contract, right?
That's actually the first five years. That are, yes, that's correct.
I saw that there was a three-year contract with a two-year possible extension, so.
Yes. So the three-year contract cost is actually ninety-seven thousand dollars and change. I don't remember the exact amount. And so the one hundred and forty-nine is actually if we extend for the fourth and fifth year, and then we included a hundred and sixty, we maxed it at a hundred and sixty, in case we get additional users, because we're purchasing for fifteen hundred users, because it's a subscription-based service. So that gives us a little bit of wiggle room in the addition that if the county employees exceed beyond fifteen hundred, but then we don't have to increase the contract amount. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yes. So you're, you're asking, this contract approves the full amount even at the extension, so you won't have to come back if you want to extend it? Is that?
Yes, sir, that was my goal.
Okay. So we assume you're gonna have good decision-making that it's working out, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Good.
So Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the contract for services with E-Logic Learning LLC in the amount of one hundred and sixty thou, not to exceed a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, to provide a learning management system for tracking and reporting on employee training.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Thank you, Stacy, and thank you for the great job you do on the employee orientations. I know some weeks are better than others, but I can't understand why that happens.
Thank you, Commissioners.
See you Monday. I think I see you Monday.
I will see you Monday. Thank you.
Yeah, and it won't be one of the good weeks, because Sam won't be there. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always a good week when he's there.
I have to tell you something now. So just, just while we're in between. So I went to the Health Department for Service Awards yesterday, but you were supposed to be the one there. I have never seen such a group disappointment as I witnessed. It's been rather troubling to me, just so you know.
That's what Rod came in yesterday, and he says that they were all set up for me. Are you serious?
Yes. It was a sad situation.
Thanks for making me feel good, Commissioner. All right, so, huh? Maybe. Yeah, I needed my ego boosted today. Been kind of depressed lately. Okay, we're on our second item. Nobody here is from the.
Mr. Chair.
It's like John gets to jump in.
John, are you doing this for the Sheriff's Office?
I will do this for, I don't know where Eric Glad is, but he was supposed to be here. Mr. Chair, this is a contract with Marine Board to provide, for the Sheriff, provide services to, on waterways, patrol services on waterways in Marion County. Of course, you know about the one at Detroit Lake. And the Marine Board, this contract is retroactive to July, because Marine Board sent this contract to the Sheriff's Office to a sergeant who was out and didn't reckon, didn't see it until it was too late. And after he got back, he was busy with some other things. So this is a late getting this contract approved, and it's one that we get every year with the Marine Board, and it really helps the Sheriff's Office provide those services in the waterways with their patrol, in the patrol boat that they have. So I would recommend that the Board approve this contract with the Marine Board.
Okay, any questions?
Maybe. I'm not seeing a lot, but is this the same amount as we've gotten in the past? Is there any change? Any change of responsibility? And it says various waterways. What does that mean?
It means various waterways, but mostly it's Detroit Lake and rivers.
Yeah, I think in the wintertime, they come down and do the Willamette a little bit.
Yeah, they do. This is a contract that they get every year from the Marine Board. It's budgeted, it's in our, it's in the Sheriff's Budget, and so we get it every year.
Now, you know, do you know off the top of your head whether it's the same amount or any change?
No, I don't.
It doesn't seem like a huge amount of money, but I know everybody helps. So I don't have any other questions. Chair Cameron, if I could, then I'd make a motion that we approve the intergovernmental agreement with Oregon State Marine Board, the Sheriff's Office to provide marine patrol from July first, two thousand and sixteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. I did notice that we own the boat, regardless of where the money comes from, so.
Mr. Chair, before you take the vote, I could maybe answer the Commissioner's question. There's a not-to-exceed amount in the contract of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven eighty-five.
Yeah. Just didn't know how that relates to other years, but it doesn't matter.
I think it's fairly, fairly much the same. It doesn't change a lot every year.
Right. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. That contract is done, and we did this under a, we did this under the consent. So that concludes our normal business of the day here in the Senator Hearing Room. I will read the calendar. I should delegate that.
They got that certification from, I can see.
Oh, HR didn't give me that certification for delegation?
Yes.
Okay, then I guess I better read the calendar. All right. Today, while we're here, at nine o'clock, Mid-Willamette Homeless Initiative Public Safety Subcommittee is in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor, upstairs at five-five-five Court Street Northeast. Also today, Wednesday, at five to seven, is Jerry Frank's ninety-third, I thought it was his ninety-fourth, ninety-third birthday celebration, location at Roger Yost Gallery, Capital Center, three-eight-eight State Street in Salem. Thursday, at twelve o'clock, twelve to one o'clock, is the Mid-Willamette Housing Initiative Focus Groups Coalition Coordination Subcommittee, location, the Salem Conference Room here on the first floor, and that is right behind us on five-five-five Court Street. On Monday, the twenty-sixth, at twelve o'clock, the Mid-Willamette Homeless Initiative Transitional Housing Shelter Subcommittee Location here in the Salem Conference Room, again, right behind us on the first floor. On nine-twenty-eight Wednesday, back here for our board session, and nine-twenty-eight Wednesday at two-thirty, we have our Capitol Community Television, CCT, taping at the CCT Office, five-seven trade, five-seven-five Trade Street Southeast in Salem. So, yes.
If I could actually have two things. One, seeing Jerry Frank's celebration, I plan on being there. But I caught a PBS program a couple of weeks ago, and Jerry was speaking and showing his family's, the history and the contribution that he's personally had, and it's pretty amazing. I've been in his office to see all of it, but I think this is absolutely unique and important person.
That was just on TV, on PBS?
Yeah, just like a week ago.
Oh, I'd like to get a copy of that.
Very good. The second I wanted to talk about on a serious note, you and I attended a, a meeting on transit service out in Marion County, in eastern Marion County primarily, held at Staton last night, and we really didn't have a chance to talk there. This isn't an agenda item, but I would sure like to get our staff and our lobbyists, et cetera, working to see the, what I got out of it. I got out of this, and you tell me if it was different, that it's kind of a push, the plan they have, it does increase ridership, the cost is the same, but it excludes any, any service east of Staton. And the stories we heard, the response we saw from the people gathered there, on individual stories, maybe things that don't show up, people coming in just to Staton, but it just doesn't seem acceptable to cut it off. They said it's an open process, they're trying to gather information and recommendation they'll make to their board, I forget when. But I wanted there, and I'm sorry I didn't say it, but the message I got from that group last night, if that's really what they were there to hear, was, don't do this, leave it the same. And I know they got problems, the same that we all face. It costs a whole bunch for a few people, but they're so particular in need, and with our commitment to trying to help the, especially the East Canyon and Focus Camp, there's got to be something we can do. The one that I heard of a couple times was that a lot of this money come from Section fifty-three-eleven, federal money. And I wondered if somebody, if everybody agrees, I'm sorry Gloria, this isn't an action item, but if we agree to perhaps contact Fritz and see what they can find, if there's some special circumstance money, some grants to apply for, something to help. And then I'd even go further to, I said it out loud to them, so what about individual contributions to the system to help lower that cost, you know, from communities, but I was really implying maybe from the county too. So I'd like, I want to see if there's some way we can help to keep that service going. That's the simple.
And I absolutely agree with that, and we had a great discussion about it on Monday. I think what I was more than hinting at, I think, was that if Lynn County, if they contact Lynn County and see.
There was nobody there.
But I think someone should contact Lynn County and see whether or not they're interested in addressing the issue, because there are many people from Lynn County. And what I read in some email was that Roger Nyquist was contacted by someone and said that no one had contacted him before that time. So no one's officially contacted him to find out what their position is on it. And the amount, they said, was forty thousand dollars. Is that still, so you don't, you can't, I mean, to cover that with federal money is going to take a really, I mean, we can contact them, but, you know, I just don't know if it would take too long. Competitive grants.
Just find out what's available.
Right, yeah, but I think really, I mean, if we're gonna have sustainable money, we may have to look closer to home for that. That's my thought. And that's why I was suggesting maybe it's an economic development issue, you know, or maybe, you know, initially, we could look at, at some funds just to bridge it, but we could build it into that when the bonds are paid off. That bond's the, you know what I'm talking about?
Our good neighbor, perhaps.
Right, yeah.
Well, there's, there's a couple of things, and I piggyback on your comment last night when I said, you know, other funding. Here's what, what I really realized last night when I was sitting there, because I looked up, there's six Board of Directors for the transit system. None of them represent that area. They represent this area here. So there's no voice, those people have no voice on these federal dollars and how they're allocated. And the other thing, Commissioner, that I heard last night, was even the federal dollars that come in are allocated back out by ODOT. So I think maybe we ought to find out from ODOT.
And that would be part of it.
Get Fritz in the room and ODOT in the room, maybe have a work session or something that finds, finds out a little bit more about how ODOT allocates those, those dollars, and then find out about Lynn County. Because I heard loud and clear, it was interesting because the one city councillor, I think he was from Almsville, that was sitting up front, off to the left, my left, your left, he said he was at that, that one of those sessions where all those people were in the room, and there was only one group that said, stop at, at Staton. The rest of the group wanted to continue to see it. The other thing I heard was from our new administrator in Almsville, said that his city council would prefer to see the continued service up the canyon at their expense. In other words, they were benefiting from this process in Almsville because of the more frequent rides. But he said they did not want to benefit at the expense of the canyon.
Never heard Staton, but as far as sublimity, that's how he feels.
Yeah. And it's, what I heard also was the group that's doing this, the Carts people basically are doing it because they're saying that their funders, i.e. the feds, are questioning why their ridership is so low. Well, it's because we've got this, I mean, we all, we all know what's going on in the canyon.
Small, poor population.
And you continue, you continue to take these things away, and it's just gonna crumble more and more instead of building them up, so.
I have to tell you some history, and it was when I first became a Commissioner, there was a Carts Committee. I'm not sure the setup. Mike Probst from Polk County was on it, and I was on it, several others. But we never had any business, and the only thing that they even hinted about was that what they wanted to do was create another taxing district, and maybe should have been followed up on, but that didn't sound good, and still doesn't to me. But the Commissioners had more involvement, eleven or twelve years. There was no reason to meet, and Mike and I said, well, got other things. But there was, maybe that should have been for them where these things come up, but it would have been a long time of doing nothing.
Yep. So who's gonna take the lead on that? Like, of you?
Well, okay, fine, and I can do what I can, but I just would like to have, oh yes, Fritz and even our lobbyist. If we find there is a source, right, start going after and bring it into this account.
Let's have Barb call, and you guys can talk, and I think that would be great.
And ODOT, on their allocation process.
I don't, I've never had any contact with those, but they gave them last night, so apparently you can find it.
Yeah, Barb should be able to find it.
What was their timeframe to start this?
Decision, and I wrote it down.
January, isn't it? They're gonna vote on it in January?
I'm sorry, I wrote it down, it's not here.
It's in that paperwork somewhere, Sam.
Sometime within this current fiscal year, is that right?
Right. It's on the next page, or one of those pages.
But I'm, I'm not trying to criticize, it's all right. I think it's December or January, and it, and we kind of asked for, it brought up at the, at the meeting last night for some type of public presentation on the staff decision that they'll be presenting to their Board. But I'm not, I'm trying to be clear, I'm not trying to criticize them at all. I know how it is. I, in my personal life, we, well, I'll give you an example. We had a, one of the garbage routes I had was from Scioto to Jordan and around Alliance. It was a hundred and ten miles and a hundred and ten customers. And I'm telling you, you can't make anything on it. But you had to provide that service to be where the others, and that's kind of the same situation, the situation they're in.
Right.
But.
So should, having a work session where, should we invite, we could invite Lynn County Commissioners to come and participate with us, and maybe ask Transit to come with, you know, like, ask them to come up with some options. We asked them to come up with some options when we met on Monday. And then meanwhile, you can be doing research and figuring it out.
Maybe find and contact. Apparently, their Board is their Transit Board too in Lynn County. But and it, and the question was brought up and answered as, well, yes, they have money that they dedicate the same way that the Carts Board does, or chariot, but to, literally, if you give something up, it means you take something away from.
Right, but again, it assumes it's a zero-sum game. That's what I asked them not to do when they were there on Monday. So if, if all they're thinking of is their transit money, that's the same answer that they're giving for our transit money. But what we're saying is maybe there's other monies there that we'd be willing to do. So, I mean, they know it better than Transit does, and I really am not keen on Transit speaking for Lynn County, especially if no one's asked them. So they just assume that they won't want to do anything. It's possible they won't want to do anything, but at least it's worth a try to have a conversation.
The other people that were in the room last night was DHS, and talking about Medicaid and people that needed to get access. We had DHS in the room, we had Staton Hospital in the room, talking about how those people needed to have that access and that they ride the bus and, you know, to get down and have that access.
It's a pretty bleak deal too, if you've heard the story. You come in, you sit there all day waiting for the bus to go back, but if it's all you got, it's all you got, a good day of it, you said.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, so maybe we could also invite some of those partners to come to a work session. Yeah, so maybe we could also invite some of those partners to come to a work session.
Fine, thank you.
Well, thank you for going.
Yeah, I'll help any way I can too. What else? Anything else? Wow.
It's for me.
You'll be doing CCTV without me this week. I hope it comes off well.
Oh, I'm sure it won't be the same without you, trust me. So, so I'm traveling up to the Lloyd Center today for a meeting with DEQ. We got some good news yesterday from Business Oregon that will have some, I think I told, I mentioned, we're gonna actually have some consultants in the room to help with this product.
Detroit?
Yes, which is really good news, because, I mean, you sit in the room and listen to these people and you kind of try to figure out what they want. So having consultants that will help guide this process, so that's gonna be good. And then I'll try to get to Jerry Frank's deal on the way back, so. All right, nothing else that's... Bill? Welcome. Did you want to say something?
Yes, just very briefly.
We already passed your item.
Number one, thank you for-
We did pass your item, right? Or John's contract?
Yes, you did. Bill Burgess, Marion County Clerk, thank you so much for expediting that. That sorter, if we get it in time to help sort those envelopes mechanically, is going to really help in efficiency in what we do and get ballots counted faster in the long run. But I wanted to just update you on where we are. We've developed 135 different ballot styles for this election, and some of them are being printed right now to be put into envelopes and mailed this Friday for military and overseas. The main mailing is less than a month from now, October the 19th, and the last day to register to vote is October the 18th. And so I really want to get that message out there for anybody that's new to Oregon or anybody that's become of age and it's time for them to register to vote. You can update voter registration all the way up until Election Day, and we can issue ballots or replacement ballots up till Election Day. But the, anybody who's never been registered in Oregon's got to be registered by the 18th. Also, some of our snowbirds that are about to take off, if we have their address, we'll send the ballot down to where they are. And if they're out of state, we try to send that out 30 days instead of the regular 20 days ahead, as long as we've got their address. Another option for people that are about to leave us for the South for the winter is that you can come into our office beginning next Monday, and we can issue a ballot for them then, and they can vote it right there in the office, and then, of course, we won't mail anything to them. So those are some big dates I want people to know about.
Any questions?
I don't know if you said it, you said 135 different ballot titles, but how many total ballots will you send out?
Oh, uh-
How many voters are there in the county? I guess what are they asking?
Right now, we're sitting at about 176,000 voters. We feel by Election Day, we may be up to 180,000 or more voters, so we'll be sending out at least that many ballots. There are a few people that, we send it out to them, it comes back to us with another address, we confirm that other address, and we have to turn around and send another ballot to them.
What type of participation are you expecting on this? Sometimes it sounds like everybody's really keyed up, and other times it's not like nobody wants to vote for anybody.
Yeah, that is so hard to say. Our history on presidential elections is that we go between 80 and 90 percent.
Oh.
And Marion County and Oregon are much higher than much of the rest of the nation as far as voting participation, so, you know, that's fantastic. And I would urge people too, that even if they're, don't feel, if they don't feel like voting at the top of the ticket, presidential or whatever, that we have lots of really important local majors that are on the ballot, so we want people to get their ballot in. Urge everybody to be a great American and vote.
So just leave it blank if you don't want to vote on it, that's fine.
That, that is certainly okay. In fact, you know, probably you should only vote on things that you're informed on voting on anyhow, and we'll be getting a voter's pamphlet out to people a couple of weeks ahead of time so they can be informed.
It's called an undervote.
I know that. I just want people to know. Because I've had people ask me, so do I have to vote on it? No.
So, Bill, you, you mentioned about 180,000 is what you expect, and if I remember, if I remember right, we had about 160 in the last-
Yes.
So we've had about a 20,000 increase in the last two years of registered voters?
Mm-hmm, and that's due to a couple of things.
Motor voter.
Due to the Oregon Motor Voter Law partially, but it's also been due to increased interest in participation, and maybe, I'm not sure what our population growth is looking at, if we're above the 1 percent that we generally have.
Right.
But certainly there are more people that are interested that maybe have never participated before.
Wow, that's like a 12 percent increase in voters.
Yeah.
Our budget didn't increase by that. Did yours?
Um, yes, yes. As a matter, I'm not sure if it's increased 12 percent, but you gave us the resources we need to run the selection.
That's good to hear. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Gloria, you good? All right. We will-
Right behind.
We will.
A jury.
Oh, I don't hit it that hard.